Well, last, I was just speaking at a clean graduation, including between the dinner and dessert. That is not a good place to be. That's right.
We're live streaming.
Wonderful.
Okay.
All right, let's get started, and I know some of you heard this, I'm supposed to spend a couple quick minutes. Thank you, the Board of Trustees, the faculty, staff, and the community for allowing me to have a second chance here. I always say in life, it's rare that we get those. When I was actually pulling out a suit, I just kind of felt like I was making a mistake, but I was like, I'm pretty big grown up and I can handle that. And it was really ironic, in February, my wife and I were on a date, and she's like, "You're really unhappy." I said, "No, honey, I love you guys, I'm very happy," and she was like, "No, I can tell, you're missing education." I said, "You're right, I am," and she said, "Well, let's apply from those president shops." I said, "I can't." I said my heart to Seward County, I said, "I miss our community, I miss our people, I miss our campus," and I said, "It's not fair for me to jump into a different school when I want to be a Saint." And probably three days later, Coach Oliver called me, and Ron, I just told a story about you earlier, I wasn't going to tell you. It was about one year ago to the date that my mom passed away, and honestly, it was 9:30 at night, I thought that's why Ron was calling me, because he's that type of man, if you didn't know Ron, he's that good of a person, he remembers all those types of things. And I actually, I spiked, I didn't answer, and I was like, "I'll call him tomorrow." And then he's like, "Oh, call me tonight," and I go, "Oh gosh, who's getting sued for some decision?" I'm not sure what you're calling. And I called him, and it was just a very exciting, you know, life-changing, my heart went out to Dr. Gunderson, you know, someone that I know well, but it was just a life-changing event that night. My wife and I stayed up all night talking about it, and so, I'm very blessed to be here, I'm sure you know that. We have a wonderful community, we have a wonderful campus, and I'm so excited just to help us grow. So, first of all, thanks for coming out here tonight, this is a much better crowd than what I thought would be here, which is awesome, which is awesome. So, just a couple things I want to touch on, and then we're going to pass it off, we're about five different people will talk. Feel free to ask questions at any time, if you have anything that you would like to add or say to that. So, where we are as a campus, you know, COVID was a tough time on everyone, and the pandemic halted a lot of things. When you walk around campus, you see that we have some deferred meetings, there's some cosmetic things that we're doing. You're going to see all of us, I'm going to be a painting machine in the evenings, especially when my family's not here. I told Raji the other day, before August, November, I painted 500 gallons of paint on our campus, historical. But bigger things than that, and on that note, last Thursday, we had a campus cleanup, we had 150 people, 150 people, six dumpsters full of trash. That's, we have faculty here, they're on their spring break, we've got a couple of community members, I mean, people love Seward County Community College. We love it, you guys love it, we're so happy to make it better. We have some, a couple of issues, like all institutions do, we need a new website. I know that's not fun and exciting, but our website is hard to find, and we're losing students because of that, so that's one of the first things that we're tackling. We are launching a new strategic plan, we launched the planning for it, launched this week. We will be having focus groups, including the community, the Board of Trustees, Dr. Carter will obviously be involved in that in a major way from 4:80, and we miss us no day or while. Oh, welcome, 4 o'clock in the morning, I'm like, "Oh, no, no, that's my guy." But we're going to go through the next few months with the idea of having a new strategic plan in the fall of September. Where our weakness is, when we look around campus, like much, much of the state, so there's 19 community colleges in Kansas. In 2016, we had 126,000 students roughly in that sector, okay? Pretty big sector for 19 colleges with very limited funds. Now, today, we have about 104, so we're down about 18% as a sector. So, when we talk about enrollment, that's not just a county community college problem, it is, we do want to fix our enrollment, it's across the sector though. So, I want to make sure that's very clear. But we are going to go into a planning phase to look at how we fix this enrollment, and what are some things that we do. We're having a board retreat on Sunday night to start talking about these items. Do we start new athletic teams, what academic programs can we bring to our community? You know, all of those things will be a part of it. It is March, April, early, almost April, there's very few things we can do by, to bring in a lot of new students, all of us. Just because these things take time to plan and to memorize. So, what we're doing through this planning phase is getting organized, making sure how and where we want to grow, with the idea that as a follow-up 23, I have a little tagline, I call it "The Year of the Saints," academic year '23, '24, and we're going to have some major growth in that year, and have a five-year plan in place to see a lot of growth every single year. There's some things happening in the state from a financial aspect, where we have to grow, we absolutely have to grow some, and so that's, that's where we're focused at. We want to make sure, I always say this, community is the middle of our name for a reason, okay? It's not Seward County College. There's some schools in the state that stuff that, that's not going to be good for them, okay? It's Seward County Community College, it's your college, it's not mine, it's not ours, it's all of ours, right? We're proud of it, it's a beautiful place, so that's why we want to have these town halls, where we can hear what is important to you, where are weaknesses at, what do we need to do better, okay? Other things that you'll be seeing on campus, as a, as a president, as, I always tell people, I'm the least important person. Everything our folks do impacts the lives of students greatly. We will continue to do more and more, we already do a lot of community involvement, something that I believe in, that will continue to increase. I try, hopefully, our employees will say this, I try to take good care of our people, we do a lot of employee appreciation, I feel like if I can make them happier, they're taking better care of our students. Questions for me before I pass it off about my thoughts or vision or comments, I'll be back after the end, if you have any questions right now, I'm happy to address them. Okay, Norma Jeans, we give this a quick rundown of me and I. I just, I think what's, sometimes as a college, I think we don't do a good job of telling each story, I have a beautiful story. We help so many, me and I, and I pick my Norma Dean up because I enjoy her, first of all, she's a great person. But what she does doesn't always get noticed because it's not for credit, okay? But she's a huge asset to our, not just our campus, but to Southwest Kansas, because we help so many BNI groups out there, so I'll pass off my part for her.
Thank you, I've been at Seward County Community College for 11 years, and I've been actually doing this kind of role more than that. I would add six more because I was at Garden before I moved down here, and my husband works with the Sharp and Crane and my office. But what does my office do? We are a liaison between the community and also a liaison between the businesses, businesses. So, my office has community enrichment classes that are non-credit, you can see art classes and the do-it-yourself type classes, just anything fun that you can think of that you want to do as a hobby. I have a person in my office that comes up with those fun, creative type classes that we can offer in the community, and we have group. There's lots of ladies that come in groups, guys, you can do the same, and they just have fun, something to do in liberal. You always hear, "Nothing to do," oh, we have lots to do. You ever hear my staff and myself on the radio, they always say, "There's something, there's always, every week, there's something going on within our office." Also, we do professional development, we do safety training, maybe supervisor training, leadership training, whatever you can think of, computer training, call our office, and even if you don't see it on our schedule, you can call us and say, "Can you offer this?" And if we can't, we will find someone. And one of the things we've done too is we partner with businesses, and for instance, a couple of years ago, a company needed to bring somebody in, it costs $10,000 to bring them in, he goes, "Norma, there's no way we can financially do that, can we partner and open it to other people that need the same type training?" I said, "Sure," and so he helped me, we marketed, and we were able to provide the training for them, and also provide it to other people who needed it in the area. So, things like that, we think we can afford it, how can we afford it? Call me, let's work it out, let's find out who else needs that training, so we can bring it to liberal, and you don't have to travel to the eastern part of the state or to Denver, wherever it is, to spend money on hotel, on food, you can keep your people here local. We do contract training, so some of the stuff you see, I did put our brochure out there when you walked in, you can grab one, yeah? You see something in there and you say, "Well, we can't do it that too," that's fine, call me, we'll work it out, and we can bring our faculty to, or whoever the presenter is, to your site. It doesn't have to be on campus, we can bring it to, we go out to Diamond, we've been to Alyssa's, we've actually been to Garden City, we've been all over western Kansas. There's not too many people in this area that do what my office does. They're starting to bring them back in Garden and Dodge, but right now, we're at, so we enjoy serving the community. Another thing is we help our students and businesses connect. We want our students to have the jobs as soon as they're done. I work a lot with Dr. Jones and her staff and faculty, and trying to get our students, once they're done with their two-year program, where do they go? The businesses contact me, we try to get them connected, whether they come in and visit with the students, or we hold a career fair. Every semester, well, in the spring, we hold a career fair, and then in the fall, we do a thing called CTE Expo. And what that is, is we invite area high school students to come and meet all of our faculty and staff, and also meet our businesses. What kind of job can I get once I take a welding program, when I take a corrosion program? So, lots of opportunities there. Also, some of the big things that you may have seen that we've done for years is our Mace School, that is part of our corrosion program. That is, we are in our 28th year offering the Mace School, and that reaches people all over Kentucky, Florida, Arizona, you name it. We have 40 industry people that come here to Liberal Kansas to get that training, and we offer twice a semester. Another thing is we do the Southwest Energy Institute. Unfortunately, it used to be a huge gas compressor institute, measurement pipeline, I'm sure you remember the big banners, and all those, the oil and gas, we know, is not the same. However, we still offer it, and we see maybe fall, spring, and summer, about 20 to 25 people. So, we still offer that training, and we also raise money for our energy programs through that. Any questions, that's just kind of a great thing, that what we offer, I also get very calls like, "I'm going to reserve a room." That's fine, I will connect you to the right person, and I tell people that, if you don't give a question, and you don't know who on campus to call, call my office, and we'll get you connected. Any questions on what we do or what we offer?
Yes. One of the things that I've discovered, made my, since you girls have been working here, is all the opportunities you have. And I wonder if you could do, I may have tried this before, you know, have a community connect or some, I don't know where it was called it, and, you know, invite them and show them that you've got the swimming exercise classes, you've got this and that. And then the other thing I wanted to tell you about is on the Fourth of July, there's going to be a parade, and afterwards, they're having anyone who signs up, I mean, I'm sure it's limited, but they would like people to come and have booths there. The cost of a booth is zero, and never happens. So, they say you can sell your things, you can share your information, you know, and things like that, so I just wanted to mention all that opportunity, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and you brought something up too, I forgot, one of the other great things we do is kids college. This is our 21st year this summer, and it is for children from first through eighth grade. We usually have about 30 to 40 courses available, but then once people sign up, we're down to maybe about 20, 25. So, if you have children, grandchildren, whoever you'd like to send, send them out here for a week with us and just learn some great things. And one of the things I've shared with people, like Brad before, is that so many students come back. We've had students, teachers, that have been kids college graduates, because they picked up a hobby or picked up a skill, or they also sell stuff at the fair, the Christmas fair, Christmas fair, they do stuff like that, so just great things we see during kids college. Thank you.
So, Les is going to dance, I'm going to note about the parade, so the great thing about getting a second chance is I get to finish some things that I started. So, we have 25,000 t-shirts coming, Phil?
Starting.
Everyone at Seward County Community College is going to be wearing the same shirt. That's one of the things I think we're proud of, and we're going to show it for everyone, so we have about 25,000 coming, so those parades are, we're going to flood them.
I'd also like to thank you for coming out tonight, this is really a nice group, you know, we do things like this, we're never sure, we're sure who's going to come, so thank you all for coming out. And I also want to say that not only the President Bennett, Chair Hough, excited he is to be back, we were very excited and very blessed and happy that he's back too, so thank you for coming back. My name is Celeste Donovan, and I'm the Vice President at Student Affairs for Seward County Community College, and I've been here 15 years. But my whole professional career has been in student services and working at community colleges. This is my fourth college that I've worked at, and you have to truthfully say that out of all four colleges that I've worked at, this is truly our community's college, because we like to be out with the community, assisting with things we can, and we like our students to go out and learn the things that they can learn by being involved in the community as well. Because one of my roles is, is to help students learn outside of the classroom, because I really believe that students learn just as much outside of the classroom than they do inside of the classroom during the two years or three years that they're here. And so, we're really excited that the community has accepted us as their community's college. I'd like to take just a couple minutes to talk about the strengths or our bragging points that I see, since I know we have some new people here to our community, and then many veterans, but some of the things that I'm really proud of is that if our students want to be successful here at Seward County Community College, there's no reason they can't be. We have the state-of-the-art math labs, we have free tutoring, we have a writing center, we have an at-risk team that, if anybody starts struggling in any of their classes, our faculty or staff can email the at-risk team, and we'd immediately follow up with that student. So, if the student stops attending classes, or for some reason they start failing, if they break up with their girlfriend and somebody sees them crying up the hallway, they can, they can email this team that responds immediately. We also have a Seward County Tuition Grant that helps our local students pay for their tuition. And as part of that, if a student gets a Seward County Tuition Grant, we require them to be part of a student club. We do that intentionally, because they say if students are engaged in their college that they're in, they'll be more likely to change and move on. So, we make it, make them join the club to make sure that they're meeting other students and participating in another way. Last spring, we did a survey of our students, and 98% of our graduating students said that they would recommend Seward County Community College to other students. 98%, so they're enjoying their experience here. 94% of the graduating students felt that Seward County Community College offered a warm and supportive environment for students, and our incoming students often cited the friendliness of the staff as one of our strengths. And last, but certainly not least, our affordability. Like I said, our local students can apply for the Seward County Tuition Grant, excuse me. It's regularly for Seward residents, it's $132 per credit hour, but if they get the tuition grant, it only costs them $22 a credit hour. In fact, I'm helping a young lady fill out her scholarship application at eight today, so if this gets to eight, I need to go home and help her do her scholarship to my next-door neighbor. Our fallen, or our fall enrollment was at 1664 Headcount, and we have students from over 42 different countries. So, we have a lot of value and culture here at Seward County that we can share with our community as well. I know many of our international students will go out to the local elementary schools and do different projects, so our local community, especially if you born and raised in, you might not know a lot of people from different places. We certainly have a lot of culture we can share. And actually, we generated 15,341 credit hours, which was a little up than last year, but we certainly have some growth that we need to do because of COVID and what's been happening over the last five years, so certainly we need to work on that. And hopefully, our strategic plan, and I'm confident that it will. And I put some holders on the table back there, I don't know that there's enough for everyone, but it kind of reflects too, as far as our student life, we have 20 different clubs and organizations on campus, we have very competitive, successful sports teams, and I've seen many of you at some of our games, and came out to support the Saints, and as they say, we bleed green here because we really believe and support our students. And then also, we have a student life, I have a student life director that offers different activities to our students throughout the year, and also invite community to come up, to come up for our concerts, speakers, entertainers, our band productions. And even like Wade today, that he came in, we had the mechanical bull, so students and factors down could ride that mechanical bull. And I said, "Well, I was pretty lean on it when I was in my twenties, but I did get on this, I decided not to do it."
Hey, great three-suits got on it, you know, first.
Yeah, I think Ty did as well, but I decided to pull myself today. So, anyway, are there any questions for me before I pass it off to the next person? And again, thank you very much for supporting us and letting us be your community college. Eric?
All right, hi, everybody, I'm Eric Golden, I'm the Director of Admissions here at Seward County Community College. And of course, you know, one of the things that we're facing is increasing enrollment. And like President Bennett said earlier, it wasn't just, it wasn't just a Seward County problem, it was all across the state. And actually, according to one of our last paperwork reports, we were, one few colleges that kind of bounced back a little bit, not as much as we wanted to, but we did bounce back a little bit, and had a credit house compared to some of our counterparts, so, and that was good. And to kind of put in perspective how much COVID really affected the admissions offices, first, I just want to tell you, as far as what admissions does, is we go out to, we visit area high schools, we attend public fairs all over, all over the state, and actually in about four different states. We cover, of course, most of western Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas, Panhandle, south or northeastern New Mexico, southeastern Colorado. And we're looking at expanding our territory all the time, so we do a lot of traveling. So, in order to be adequate, and we couldn't travel anymore, that really, really hurts the admissions office. And so, just to kind of throw out some kind of software numbers for you there, last year in 2020, we were only able to see about 781 prospective students, you know, which we kind of see as far as our budgetary numbers. And so, why we are so optimistic for this next enrollment year, this 2023 enrollment year, is we've seen 1,383 prospective students this year, because we were able to go out to those college fairs, we were able to make those high school visits. So, we nearly doubled our numbers, and actually, our yield rate as far as, you know, getting the students to apply and getting students to actually enroll here at the college is well above the state average. State average is about 33% or so, Seward County says 45%, almost 50% of our enrollment percentage, so we actually do very well. And a lot of it, I think, is due to credit, like everybody's been saying, just the sense of community. And we have that all the time, whenever students come to campus, we really like to make that connection with them, that personal connection, you know, introduce them to everybody, so they can see just how well that they can fit in here at the campus. We also put some new procedures in place this year, as far as admissions office goes. We put some new procedures in place this year that's going to help us track and communicate better with our students. That's one of the things that, technological goals that we're having, you know, and we mentioned the website, that is definitely one of admissions' top priorities, as far as, I know you're going to navigate the website, as far as our online application is concerned, and just making it easier for those students, and so they're not facing these roadblocks. So, I, we are absolutely excited to have that back, and we cannot wait for the strategic plan to roll out. And, you know, enrollment is absolutely going to be a big part of that, and even that admissions will be the street head, so, any questions?
Yes. The international students that you recruit in, I'm sure everybody does it kind of the same way, but we ended up with three college students on Christmas break because they couldn't go home, and they were great kids, but to me, there should be some way where they can stay on campus.
Yeah, and that is something that we're kind of looking at in addressing for our Health and Department. There are certain parts of the department here where, yeah, they need to like those families, so that's something that we're looking at. Any other questions? No?
But how do you word out to connect the international students to the broader community beyond just being a student?
What was that I'm not?
How do you make a connection between your international students and the broader community?
So, usually, most of our international enrollment are through our athletic teams. So, that is done through athletics, the department, they work closely with the admissions office. As far as our paperwork, because the paperwork for international student admissions is pretty strenuous, so it's very strenuous. Most of them is through athletics and the admissions office, and our athletics department is amazing, and Dr. Phil seems out and about involved in the community. They regularly go and visit our art schools, grade schools, participate in community events, have to celebrate the parades, all that kind of thing. So, yeah, we have a lot of students from Brazil, you know, some students from Mozambique, you know, some students from Poland and Eastern Europe. So, would you like to get them out and show them? Yeah, I hope that answers it.
I was just going to say, the international students have also been excellent volunteers for community service projects. I've used them a number of times, they've helped us with the food coverage, they helped us with COVID distribution. The teams have been amazing, but a lot of them were international students, basically putting in that community hours, getting to know the community, but also providing services to the community.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, I know, I can't use the tennis team Hawaii that they had last year, I don't know, so, yeah.
The volunteer team just got to work out too.
Yeah. Any other questions or anything? So, one of the departments that admissions is very closely tied to, that's something that we really can help each other out quite a lot, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bailey.
Hi, I'm Mr. Bailey, I am the outreach director. I take care of the 11 high schools that are in our service area, anywhere from Stanton County, Ian Johnson, Elkhart, Ralla, Yucatan, Moscow, Satanas, Sublet, Southwestern Heights, Mead, and Liberal America. I call them my suburbs because they are still part of the campus. Whatever we do on campus, the Higher Line Commission thinks I need to do off campus. So, sometimes that's a little challenging. All but Moscow and Stanton County have classes for concurrent, concurrent high school students, which, you know, we're very proud of because of the teaching requirements. Those students that aren't able to have face-to-face classes are then, we try to get them connected with distance learning or on-campus classes through Zoom or whatever modem or mode we are using at the time. We also use the Edge Can for some of the high school students that we're not able to connect with face-to-face or through Zoom. With that being said, we have six schools that come on campus every morning with a little school bus, a little car, a little whatever. That's Satanas, Sublet, Ralla, Yucatan, Southwestern Heights, and then Liberal just drives themselves up. So, anyway, out of all the high school students, we make up about 35% of the student population. So, that's not bad for not seeing them, that's why campus may not always be a school, because some of them are on campus. A lot of the students do come on campus for the career tech classes, as well as the general ed classes that the high school's not able to. Just, you know, we do have a few each year that are overachievers, as I like to call them, and they graduate with both their college and their high school upon them. And we usually, depending on the year, there's at least one or two, and a lot of them come from the concurrent. They either, if we're lucky enough, they will go ahead and stay one semester with us and then leave at Christmas. Most of them come with so many credits that they just skip us and go on, which is, which is hard for me, because I want them to graduate here. It's hard for Eric, because we want to retain them here, but it's just, you know, we also go for what's best for the students. And wherever we go, we are their homeschool, and we tell them that, that whether it's financial aid or whether it's transfer programs, we're your home college. If you have questions, come ask us. We, you know, we hope, obviously, you'll be coming to us, but if not, we're not going to hold it against you too long, and, you know. So, but anyway, with that being said... So, but anyway, with that being said, do you have any questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
I heard recently that Oklahoma Panhandle kids are, can use the Surk County tuition. Did I make that myself, Claire, while I'm trying to say?
I have not heard that yet, but I'm all excited because we've been trying to get Oklahoma Panhandle over here for quite a while.
So.
Well, we'll have to check in on that with the high schools.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm here to tell a few stories. I was really excited to go talk about how we need to tell more stories because that's my favorite thing. One of the things that's important to me personally in my role as the marketing PR director here is making sure that we get the word out to the students who don't understand that we are here for them. The role of a community college traditionally in the United States has been to reach out to students who don't have access already to higher education. That might be students who are from another country, who are from low-income families, or who might go first in their family or to go to college. I was fortunate because both my parents did attend college, but I decided to go to the school of Hard Knocks as a teenager. And so I did not finish college until 30 years after I started. And I didn't really get motivated to do that until I had higher peers who were coming. We have a lot of people like that in the community who started college or kind of fall pay or eligible and who are still in search of a college degree. Kansas at one point, I think, had 25% of our residents in the state don't hold college or terminal degrees. So we've been working a lot with the college, well, it's now the Upworth Adult Learning Center over in the old hospital building, which was the college's original home, to really expand our efforts to get those students here on campus. And so one of my goals in the next phase as we're planning for how to expand our college is to get ahold of more students to tell stories about how the college has served them. One I will mention is connected to my own family. Over spring break, we got to see our two grandsons who are living in Kansas City with their parents. And our daughter-in-law graduated from the medical lab tech program here on campus. And it was a hard journey for her because her mother got breast cancer and died while she was enrolled. Her father had to leave the country. And she and her son experienced a lot of financial difficulties. The foundation really helped them. She was able to come back for an extra semester after she was expected to graduate, earn her credential, and is making big money up there in Kansas City now. And so they took our grandsons away from us and moved away, but it was wonderful to see them. And it's really exciting to me to see that generational effect and impact of higher ed because my daughter-in-law did not grow up in a family where there was easy access to education. And she's already making sure that her sons have a better experience. In fact, they got to ride on an airplane and go to Chicago last month. That was a big deal for all four of those family members because none of them had ever been here. So that's your story for this evening. And I have this little reminder sheet to tell you about some things coming up. In April, we're going to have proof that spring really has arrived and that life is back to normal here on campus. We've got some really exciting events. The Creative Writers Coffee House, the Humanities Department under Darren Orpman's supervision, will be sponsoring their popular event on the eighth. And that will give us the opportunity to hear readings from students who won the poetry contest that was taking place in the fall and also who will be published in Tell a Live magazine. So that's coming up on April eighth. April fourth, tickets are going on sale for the spring concert, which happens much later in April. But before that, the musical, yes, we're going to have a musical this spring. And it's the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling大会.
Go into the other one.
Batteries run out and you have to stop.
It should be already on already.
Everybody play Osprey's.
Okay. So that's my signal to grab up here. Musical is April 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And then the spring concert is happening on April 29th. And that does come with a small admission price, but I will tell you that the money raised in that goes to music scholarships for our students. So a week after that, May 7th, we're having commencement. So that's an exciting spring for us and thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Rachel. And just a couple of notes before questions, a couple of things I forgot and I thought of. So Mike, let's start about high school enrollment. That's about 35% of our total enrollment, so it's very important who we are and what we do. Another thing with the Adult Education Center, we, there's a report they put out every year, about this time it came out, about two or three weeks ago. We are the least educated county in the state of Kansas. Just let that sink in for a minute. We have a lot of work to do. The opportunity is tremendous. And that's an impact that will really change people's lives. I also want to mention too, because this is my second time around. I wasn't here long enough by beach for the first time, of course, some of you. But this was, you know, I was very settled at Colby Community College. I've been there 33 years. I was named the president waiting. There was really no reason for me to leave. But I was always interested in the presence of a certain kind of community college. And the reason why is because of our academics. We focus on student success, graduation rates, all of those things I find important. We're going to be the number one in all those categories. That's part of our strategic plan. I'm not here to be second. I have no interest in being second in anything. Especially when it comes to the success of our students. But the history and the community support and the people at Surk County Community College is the only place I'm going to be. And so I think that speaks a lot. Someone's like, oh, you know, must be, just came right back. But that's not easy. I don't know if you bought this whole couple, four or five homes on one year. It's not easy. Plus, you know, like, you work all the time, you have all packing, so it's really, it's really a lot. And then back to what Eric said about, you know, and that's why our website, someone asked me, why is your website so important? We know if we get them to campus, they become students of Surk County Community College or next to that. For the students who are outside of our reach, we rely on that website to get them here. So that's why we need a flashy fancy website to get people excited about coming here. A couple of things I'd like to mention, and just go back a little bit. I, for those who do not know, I am Mary Ann Olinsey. I always say I'm increasingly look like Shrek, and she just says prettier. So we're on very different paths in life. It's pretty funny, actually. But we have two beautiful daughters. I have a six-year-old, Madeline, and eight-year-old, Mary Bell. And when this came about, we sit down with girls and talk to them, and Madeline's like, yeah, let's go. I'll go pack. Sounds great. She's down with whatever. Mary Bell is very conservative and shy, very, very shy. And she has told me, I was speaking earlier tonight, I was telling the story, and she kind of teared up a little bit. She said, Daddy, I know you're not happy. Aren't you for Dad? I thought I did a good job hiding that from her. She's like, we need to do this. So she goes to her room, very smart girl, comes out with her signature on it, holding a contract that says, Daddy, I want you to be happy. This is the right move. No more changes. And this is the most serious contract that I've signed, to be honest with you. My hand is shaking a little bit. But my entire family decided here, they're not here yet. We're closing our house on Thursday if everything goes as planned. Actually, I offer my house for Colby this afternoon, so I may have sold that one too. So, and I, someone said, are you committed? They're going to drag me out of here. I'm not going to be, I'm not going to listen to you, trust me. Also too, on those notes, other projects that will be in the future. We have our Champions Center, our Sharp, Champions Center over here. The bathrooms are ready soon, and then we are writing some grants to finish inside of that, which is, I don't know how they confuse our phases. This is on phase one, two, three, I don't know, two, eight, four, something like that. Or the phases, it'll wrap up that. And then we have the duty of care to continue that. If, and I think, I may be wrong, but if you had started under Dr. Dunn's leadership, was when that idea first developed and then, even further back, was Dr. Dunn first had the idea? Okay. And so I think we have the duty of care to all those donors and board trustees, Dr. Dunn, Dr. Trask, they have to see it through. And that last phase is a tennis center. So we're going, although it's going to take us, well, it's going to be on our radar because I think it's really, really important. Another thing that we have to do, it's just kind of evolved over time. Like we have, we have it all normal here. It's just becoming a school. We can't have this on our campus. So we gotta have to figure out financially, is it fixable, is it something we can use? If it's not, we clean it out and tear it down and build something nice for our students. And so I ask our staff to really look at their entire area and let's really focus on how do we make this campus more available. There's a lot, a lot of things that we can do. And I am a planner. I didn't get to see all the way through this first time. But when I talk about the strategic plan, Russell had other plans to go with that, like facility plans. When I said the facility plan, I want ours to be light to Roger, and he's like, oh, my goodness. It's a lot of work. It is Roger, but it's all worth it. If you have Roger, he's like, yeah, absolutely. Let's, let's go. But I want to know the square footage of every room. I want to know last time they painted that room. I want to know last time the carpet was replaced, is one of them, I don't know, replacing it again. Everything needs to be on a cycle. And we work hard to do that. COVID just kind of slowed us down a little bit. It's time to do that again. So those are the types of projects that we're discussing. We need to put, do something over here for the softball teams. They have a locker room. That's a big piece of it. If you get into our softball field, it looks like lakes or county in the springtime because we have some bad drainage. We got to fix some of those issues. Our CBL program has exploded, exploded. We have tons and tons of students seeing that. And we're having a meeting in mid-April with some businesses in town, seeing what we can do to help that program out. It's a, it's a, it's a program that is only going to increase. Eli and I were at the beginning today, and we're talking about the number of loads of milk that will be going into Dodge City, the cheese plant, which is breaking ground in September. And so the pressure on our CBLs is only going to increase. We have a grain elevator, which is also being built on our campus right now. Pretty exciting. We have a little, we have a lot, I didn't know that the other day. We have a big pile of flour, so if you want to bite, you can bite it some other chance. So all of those great stuff happening on campus, which is, which is, which is awesome. And it makes us such a unique place. And I think that, I was telling the staff today, we've been successful the entire time, right? Our institution is built on success. Now we're just going to take that term and kind of meet the future on path ahead. And we just have to adjust a little bit. And that's all that we need to do. But those are some of the projects that we're looking at. Like I said, I'm ecstatic to be here. I have beautiful families, excited to be here. It's a wonderful place. Questions, comments? The floor is open.
Because you know I have a question.
Well, you gave me like five questions the last week, so go ahead, continue on.
So when you talk about enrollment and you talk about the Colby Center, the Adult Learning Center, I think I feel like we're missing the boat. I feel like those students, if you've ever been over there, they have such a fierce desire to learn. They want to learn. And I don't feel like we're really transitioning them to the main campus once they graduate there, once they get their English, once they get their GED. I don't think we're getting them onto the main campus.
There are a lot of having power, there are a lot of them that already have degrees, sometimes advanced degrees. You know, if you're looking at somebody who's a doctor, but you guys just recognize that, I can just comment, but.
You're absolutely right. This will not fix it. But one of the things we're going to do is we're going to start having some more of our regular meetings there. I think we have a presence cabinet needs every week, and we're going to start meeting there once a month. That way, all of us there. When you're in a place, is what you see. Oh, we should fix that, right? If you're not there, it's very difficult to see those things. So, but we, we get the things, and I think it's lost in our conversation today about reducing the student, the usual students. And there's some small things we can do where we can take a, someone working towards a GED and make them fill, make their part of the campus. And those are, those are inexpensive things that we can do. They can help convert that absolute opportunity there.
I just hope that that's thought of in the strategic plan process. And if you happen to fancy that graduation, that is my most big graduation to tend. They are so dang excited. I would wish.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, yeah. Yeah, Sarah, hi, maybe. So as far as Colby Center goes, we actually started, and admissions started in addition a couple of years ago this spring. That anytime they have a new enrollment session, a couple of weeks later, we will, we will go down there. And actually, I have been down at Colby Center most of the time since the beginning of, the beginning of the school year to kind of help make this connection, because you're absolutely right. Those guys are part of our campus, and that's some of the conversations that I've had with Luke and some of the other people about making sure that those people are part of the campus, getting their A and R numbers and helping them. You know, I would love to see those guys who are true, are true over there.
Yeah.
To kind of help with a little bit of child services degree. So those are some of the things we're working on, so.
Could be even better if we were having.
Yeah.
You mentioned how important community is at Surk County Community College. I had to say that the college does an excellent job with being called the community. We have, at the Chamber, we have separate of your staff that are Chamber ambassadors that come and help in our new businesses. We have a couple of board members that help us. We have had, we had a great partnership with the Business and Industry Department and Norma Jean doing classes that help to enlighten our business people in different areas that they, that they can learn more, how to think of having a better business. And your students come out, your basketball women's and men's basketball team came out and helped us with the duck festival last fall, and they had a great time. And I think all the people out there were happy to get to know them and meet them. And I had stopped and visited with them a little bit during that festival, asking them where they were from. It was amazing to hear all the different places where they're from and hear some of their stories. One of your girl students got into a golf cart with me to ride across the park. And I asked her where she was from, from Poland, and she said, I've never ridden in a golf cart in Poland. So she went down the trail, and then another one of the basketball players said, I asked them how they liked liberal, because it seemed like, you know, some of them were from Chicago. Just all, all these big different cities. I asked them how they liked being in liberal Kansas. And they all said, we love it here. And one of them even said, I wish Surk County was a four-year school so I could stay here all four years.
Thanks to that. One other thing on that note, and I emailed a couple of people, but if you're interested, contact us. Please, please let us know. I want to create a community campus beautification group because sometimes I'm not really creative. Painting flowers is on my strong suit, so I don't have an eye for that. But I really want to, as we change our campus and we really make some improvements to it, I think that's something that's really, really important. So if you're interested in that, just, Dr. Jones, can you give us just a two-second go on the tech campus?
Hi, I'm Amber. I am the dean of the industrial, I hate to stand in front of people, industrial technology campus. I started at Seward in August, and I couldn't be happier here. There are so many wonderful people. This is a wonderful school. I've been in education for about 20 years, and this is the best move I've ever made. So one of the things about Seward that drew me to it was my research, to get my doctorate, was on how to have the most impact with a community college. And that's with basically industrial tech, career tech programs. It's the most instantly, almost impactful. So we have quick turnaround with degrees and certificates that students can use efficiently, correctly in the workforce to make our community more sustainable. So part of that, I feel like, is we are a community college. We need to serve our community. So I feel like my job is to work with Norma Jean and Eli and the economic development corporations, our businesses, and find out what we need. We already have some amazing programs. The programs that I wanted to have where I came from, I was like, I need HVAC, I need diesel tech, I need CDL. We have phenomenal instructors and phenomenal programs in that. Our CDL program like, Brett. Our C D L program, like Brad said, is thriving. We need more space, we need more people in the classes, and we're gonna have to expand that. But we've got to grow, and part of that is gonna be meeting industry needs with automated technology for production, for meeting sustainable energy programs, things like that. So being able to be nimble with our industry to promote jobs, so that we have more jobs, which will bring more people, which will help us be in a more thriving community. So I feel like just keeping my nose to the ground, keeping my finger on the pulse of what we need is kind of my, my job and what we're trying to do. And we have a lot of irons in the fire, and we're trying to, we're trying to get them all done as quickly as we can. But input from the community is what I feel like is my most important thing to do, is listen to what you guys say we need to do and try to be as nimble as I can to meet that need. So, so you have any questions about the question?
Yes, sir.
When you select your classes, do you try to, like I'm thinking wind, wind chargers, solar?
Right.
Is there, like, if one of the other community colleges is offering that, do we not offer? Or do we, how do we, how do we select what we're offering?
It's interesting. So ten years ago, we had a gentleman's agreement, we all called. Those gloves are now off. They came off at the state level about five years ago. So, for example, you bring up wind, Pratt, Pratt, or Cloud has a, has a big wind program. I'm not really interested in big winds just because of the cost of it. But we can do small wind and solar and tap into the same market. When those things develop, I reach out to those presidents and say, hey, let's sit down and have a conversation about this. This is why we need to do this. Everything follows, all programs like that, follow through the tech ed authority, and we have to have approval. And used to, it was very common, those programs would get denied because someone else was offering them within a certain radius. Very seldom you see that happen anymore. But we just sit down, believe it or not, with President's group, we, we meet at least once a week. And then we all talk, we're kind of like a couple of middle schoolers, really. We text and call each other all day long, oh, guess what we're doing, you know, taking selfies and stuff. But it's, it's really a great group, and that's how we approach that. So those opportunities are there. Our areas that we serve are so unique, and so that's important too. Also on that note, and Rose is going to give us this, which is, that's okay. I told her when I came back I would have a liberal number. The phone is in my backpack, and I just haven't converted my numbers over. So I'm gonna give you, it'll be soon, I'm gonna give my cell phone number. And it's, and that way, you can, you can call me, you can text me, whatever you're comfortable with. If you have something you need help with, just let me know. So my cell phone is three zero three, I don't have a number yet, it'll be soon, I just gotta get the time to do it. Three zero three nine eight one seven zero two six. And literally, I'm here to help you in any way that I can. So if you, if you see something, small, big, whatever you need help with, just let me know. I went through my contacts, I think there's five thousand contact numbers in there, so a lot of people will tell them, switch my number when it comes to that. I'm gonna do it, it'll be fine.
It's changing your number.
It is. I promise you, I'm gonna, I'm gonna live up to that promise, so.
You mentioned athletic programs, what are you looking at adding?
So I'm at the point, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds here, but the state's changing the funding to where now per student will be very important again. The funding formula changed in two thousand and eight, we're kind of coming back to what we were like two thousand and seven. We're gonna look at a couple of different things. We're looking at soccer, we're looking at cross country, we're looking at esports. There's several different things that we gotta look at as of, with me and the board, and kind of go through it. And Dan is in the audience, he's done a great job of giving me data the last few weeks for our board retreat on Sundays, so I have that information for him. It's, you have to be careful in how you grow. You know, where we love, we strive, we strive all of our programs. We talk a lot about our technical programs because they're fun, the students earn lots of money. There's this thing called the K-Tip Report, it's a Kansas training information program, which measures your unemployment taxes to the state of Kansas, and that's how we, that's how we know how much money our graduates earn. The data's a little skewed this year, I don't trust it, if we go back to the last five years, we're number one or number two each year, not the poor. So we spend a lot of time talking about those programs because they produce quality job outcomes. But there's a caveat, Brad, and Dr. Carter fantastic, that but is, you still make your money in genetics. And so when I, when I think about adding sports, we're adding to students who are going to study genetics, which helps pay for all those fancy technical programs. Because you gotta have those, we gotta meet the needs of the healthcare workers and, and, you know, Industry 2.0 and all these corrosion, all these wonderful things that we have. Those funds help pay for those types of things, so. Good question. Other questions?
I've got a couple.
Yeah?
You don't have to answer this in detail, otherwise we'd be here till ten. But when did the community college system in America begin? And have you ever heard of a community college that morphed or evolved into a four-year college?
Yeah, there's actually quite a few situations where a community college has moved into a four-year college. You know, I don't know when the first community college, I mean, probably, I'm guessing like the eighteen-sixties is probably when we first saw the first community college in our country. I'm guessing, it's, yes, don't pull me to that. We're different, because we have nineteen community colleges, and you have seven technical colleges. So you have twenty-six two-year colleges in the state of Kansas. Plus you have all of your state universities, plus you have your private universities, your big schools. So there's a lot of educational opportunities. Don't hold this to me, because I've not looked this up in a while. I think we're one of thirteen states that does, that does not have a system. So where we have local boards, most states have gone to one board, like everybody, and they're, they're all in one system. That's why our, one of the greatest opportunities, don't tell us to dodge or guard or track, not that we don't like them, we just want to get there first. Our biggest opportunity to grow outside of our community is southwest. Because when we go to the west, by twenty-five quarter, they're loaded with people. Their tuition rates are much higher than we are, and they don't do as good a job as we do. And I'm not picking on any schools, there's some schools along that quarter that have like a nine to ten percent graduation rate. We have a fifty-six percent. It's very different, okay? We're much better product than we're cheap. So that's where we go, when we go to the east, right? When we go to the east of here, we compete against so many schools, and a lot of those are cheaper than us. And so our theme is the south and the west. We're nineteen independent schools, plus a tech school. We're a little bit different because we have both, right? So we're one of nine. There's, out of those nineteen, there's nine of those merged with go techs. And that we're blessed to have that, one, because it's great for our community, but also two, we get some capital out of that fund, and there's some other benefits we get because of that.
Brent had Googled, so junior colleges started with the Morrell Act of eighteen sixty-two.
Whoa!
So what junior colleges, which was established in nineteen oh-one, is the oldest one still in existence?
Thank you, Becky. Other questions? Yes, sir.
So mine will be a little bit more of a statement. This is both a warning and a compliment. I'm extremely excited to have you here, and I expect great things from you. That being said, we have three administrators here. You from college, April Ward for the county, Todd Carter for the school district. I have a hand to the other administrator for our acting district, the city manager. And also, we will start looking for a CEO of the hospital. So all I really want to say here is, thank you for raising that bar of the great administrators we have. Because as an elected appointed official, I'm just part of a group. Even though we campaign and everything, we're not the important ones. You guys are, you guys are the force that does all the things for us. So you guys are raising the bar for what we need to choose as a city manager and as the CEO of the hospital. And I want to say that if we don't choose somebody that matches what we have in this room, things that we know. And I will other, hey, lady, what's your direction, commissioner? Look at you, Dennis. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for that. And I just want to say, you know, on that point, it's amazing, I mean, how well we all work together and the amount of constant communication that we had. And we met every day during COVID, which, I love you guys, there was a lot, there was a lot of meetings. Every day we went through COVID. And then Robert Carter and I, we've been friends, two thousand and eight? So we've been friends for, colleagues for a long, we, it's kind of scary. We actually chaired a committee of chief academic officers in the state for about thirty or four years together, which they should not let us be in charge of the evening. It was a lot of fun, so. Any other questions?
I, I just want to say something real quick. We had a meeting Monday night with the Kansas Leadership Center and the Colton Foundation, and they chose to come to our community, which I think is huge. And I was able to share this with President, but that night they asked, who needs to be at the table? Who's important in your community that you need there to bridge the gap and to be successful in the community? To bring businesses here and to make sure they don't just get started, that they maintain and keep going. And I shared with him, Suracan Community College was the first one that came out in that discussion, that they have such a big impact on the community. And of course, your elected officials came up, but it was later on, there was a lot of other people. But to what the Thompson girls back here had to say too, that adult, the adult learning center was a part of that too, and what an important role that they play in our community. And I was very excited when I found out the president Bennett was coming back and shared that with him. And I think he shares a lot of the same, and he still a lot of us have, and he really has the community's best interests. And I think it's an amazing thing that Suracan, you have a great staff, all the guys that work so closely. That are running, and a few of them that are back down, back there too. So, exciting to meet.
Thank you for that. Now, if somebody came up or something you weren't, didn't feel comfortable with, just call me, schedule a meeting, email me. Any one of us, we're all accessible all the time. I don't have a lot of great features, I communicate a lot, I communicate with my staff on a regular basis. Weekly updates, I keep the board updated, so I try to be very transparent as we do before. I, in, in closing, I just, I want us to realize that the best opportunity for community colleges in the state of Kansas is where we're sitting right now. There's some schools that they don't have an option to go out and start a new program, to start a sports team. We are so blessed to have a strong financial support and community support, and, you know, we can pile up together. I'll be honest with you, I don't sleep for a lot. I got up at three o'clock this morning thinking about which markets we're gonna attack. And I'm just like, oh, yeah, we can do this, you know? And so everyone's up to say, I'm the brakes, it's, it's, and you can't be the only one that's in time. So the best opportunity in the state of Kansas is for growth, it's great here. Thank you so much for coming out tonight, I appreciate the support.